Councilwoman Schubert. Councilman Yasi.
Yeah. Okay. Well, Eevee, I'm sure she's just gonna be a few minutes late. She's probably stuck in traffic with all the stuff going on. This meeting is called to pursuant of the provisions of the Open Public Meetings Law. Adequate notice of this meeting was advertised in the Herald News on January ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Copies were provided to the local news media and posted continuously in the municipal building. A copy of this notice is available to the public and on file in the office of municipal clerk. Good evening, Eevee. As per state fire code, I am required to acknowledge that there are two emergency exits in this council chambers. The main entrance which you enter through and a secondary exit to the left of where I'm seated. If there is an emergency, walk orderly to the exit, exit through the door, down the stairs, and out the building. If there's any questions, please raise your hand. Seeing none. We do have one presentation tonight, which we're gonna start with that. I'm gonna ask the Public Safety Committee to join me. Roll call. Yeah. Okay. Ask the Public Safety Committee to join me in front of the desk. Tonight's an evening where we want to recognize our police department and our police officers for receiving a traffic safety hero award due to AAA. Correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask our chief to come up and explain what that's about, and then we will present our award to our officers.
Thank you, Mayor. As councilors, anything, thank you all. We are very honored to be here to, one, be recognized as a department, and to also recognize Sergeant Sandy Zidane and Patrolman Michael Moore. Just to kind of briefly explain the award. So, the American Automobile Association, which we commonly know as AAA, presents an award to the community based upon our overall contributions and efforts towards traffic safety. It's not an easy task to achieve. There's some agencies that do not receive that award and agencies that do, either receive bronze, silver, or gold award, and that's all dependent upon our contributions. And I must say, each and every member of our police department is truly invested in traffic safety. We participate in numerous programs, nationally recognized, whether it's driving impairment enforcement, pedestrian traffic safety, and other AAA initiatives and educational programs. So with that being said, AAA assessed our efforts in two thousand twenty-three, and I'm happy to announce that we have been awarded the gold award for that which we are honored to receive. So, that's that, Mayor. And I'd like to highlight also two things, if I may. Sergeant Zidane, okay, the driving force to much of our success here. Sergeant Zidane is the head of our traffic division. He's also some notable achievements. He's also the president, current president right now, of the State County Traffic Association, and he's also an accident re-�uckiness. And I must say that Sergeant Zidane devotes a lot of time to address the needs and concerns of the public, and he's responsible for organizing a lot of programs here with our personnel. So Sergeant Zidane, thank you for your contribution. Thanks. Now, Patrolman Michael Moore. So AAA awarded Patrolman Michael Moore the Traffic Safety Hero Award. And this year, so Patrolman Moore is assigned to our patrol division, but he wears many hats, and he's always willing to help us out wherever we need him. And this year, he has stepped up tremendously and assisted our traffic division with all the needs and programs that we implemented this year. In addition to that, Patrolman Michael Moore also oversees our Street of the Week program, which has been implemented in years past. Residents voice their concerns and needs through Michael Moore. He reviews them, and then he mitigates those issues. So, Patrolman Moore, thank you for your contribution.
Thanks, Chief.
Last thing, if I may say, thank you all, really, for your support here tonight and the community. It's really great that we could all work together, again, to ensure the safety of our town. Thank you. That's it, Mayor.
Just wanted to say how proud we are of our police department and efforts that our officers give to our community. Honors like this, being recognized for what you do. We're proud of each and every one of you guys for what you do for our community, and it shows that it's being recognized by others. So, thank you. The day you went down to your, to be recognized down there was the day I really wanted to be there, and I was unable to. So, Mike signed up by the show, he went down there for me to participate in that, and I saw the pictures, and that had to be a complete honor for you guys to be down there and be recognized by AAA. So without saying that, we want to recognize each and every one of our department and our two officers. So I've been asking them to read the purple.
Of course. Whereas AAA Northeast announced the Bloomingdale Police Department won a gold award in the two thousand twenty-three AAA Community Traffic Safety Awards Program for its efforts in creating safer traffic environments for all roadway users throughout our community. The department members' dedication to serving and protecting those beyond the call of duty, and we thank you for the unwavering commitment to our citizenry. Presented this nineteenth day of December two thousand twenty-three by the government body of the borough of Bloomingdale. Cheers.
Nice to give you that recognition. We have Sergeant Sandy, uh, name on it, Traffic Bureau of Bloomingdale Police Department. Government body. Government body recognizes your outstanding guidance and efforts, focused on the improvement of our local traffic safety in the borough. Your unwavering contributions have been
A solid.
A solid. The solid foundation. Within the Traffic Bureau, we would like to thank you for your dedication service to our community. Presented this nineteenth day of December two thousand twenty-three by the government body.
Now, it's my honor to recognize Patrolman Michael Moore for two thousand twenty-three's Traffic Safety Hero Award. The government body thus hereby recognize your AAA Northeast two thousand twenty-three Traffic Safety Hero Award for your commitment to ensuring traffic safety within the Borough of Bloomingdale. We'd like to thank you for your dedicated service to our community. Presented to this nineteenth day of December by the government body of the Borough of Bloomingdale. Thank you.
Mayor, it was an honor being down there also. Not everybody got the gold award, not everybody got the hero award, but Bloomingdale got both, which was a pretty proud moment for us. And I got on his free mill, I have to do something. Thanks. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for coming in. Appreciate it. Good seeing you. Same to you.
I'm done, and I'm leaving.
Okay. To continue on, we don't have any non-agenda items tonight. I'd like to have a motion to open up early public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come on up. Seeing no one, motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, report of committees. Eevee.
Um, for Tri-Borough First Day, they have, um, heard their numbers from November. Um, total, uh, calls were one hundred and thirty-four, uh, calls. Um, they, Butler had fifty-nine, Bloomingdale forty-two, Kenelon forty-nine. There were four mutual aid calls. Um, and year-to-date calls, um, there were, um, one thousand six hundred and forty-three calls. County, they had sixty-five. Tri-Borough FAS calls, sixty-nine. They covered fifty-nine calls, and they missed ten calls. Um, total number of November calls was one thirty-four. Um, they had a special installation dinner coming up, um, January twenty-second. Um, for the library. Um, they have, um, they did attend the holiday stroll. I can't remember yet. Um, they, um, they have a couple of things lined up for, um, next year, which is the Designer Handbag Bingo, March twenty-second, Aquarium Hall, and Dune Pianos, May fourth, at Glen Wildly Clubhouse. Um, there is a film festival at the Senior Center, uh, Christmas, uh, Christmas Karen, uh, which is, um, this, this, uh, this Thursday, the twenty-first, ten a.m. And then, um, that's that. And then they also, very big, they already have their Valentine craft scheduled for, um, for January. They already have a Valentine craft scheduled. Um, they, um, I don't have anything to report for the Y, Y O. And, um, I don't have it.
Okay. Ready? Nothing else, sir. Door?
Um, I have a couple things. The public event calendar for two thousand twenty-four is already posted online. Um, our first event, March eleventh, that is the Ramadan Crescent lighting, six-thirty at Borough Hall. And then our next one after that will be March thirtieth, that's the Easter egg hunt at twelve o'clock at Walter T. Bergen, which, again, you can find that online. Um, let's see what else we've got. So, posted on social media, we will be closed. No DPW pickup, and Borough is closed on Monday, the twenty-fifth, for Christmas. Then we are reorg meeting, January second, seven p.m. I'm kind of going, sorry, according to this. And Borough offices are closed and no DPW pickup Monday, January first, in observance of New Year's Day. I also did want to mention, now that we've had our big swarm of the year, which I posted on social media today, please don't forget to sign up for Rave, which, another name is the Smart nine-one-one, that folks can sign up. It used to have a different name, but same concept. You can sign up, and you're notified of any emergencies in town, whether it be your specific area in town or the entire town in general, especially when we have events like we just had with the flooding. Also, don't forget that you can sign up for Recycle Coach, which reminds you about recycling according to your street. It's wonderful because it sends you text messages about what is coming up for the week. Uh, is there anything else? I think that's it. Oh, and also, I drove around yesterday, which I'm sure Mike will get into a little bit more detail, but drove around yesterday a number of times, and I just wanted to thank our police department, the fire department, our DPW, everybody did a great job. We were very lucky compared to other towns. Pompton Lakes, Paquonic, they really had it a lot worse than we did. I think our flood mitigation in Sloane Park was a huge success. And, yeah, John's gonna talk about that. But I also did want to say, because I ran into a lot of our DPW guys, I ran into Frank quite a bit, and everybody was just doing a great job. So, thank you all for that.
Okay, John?
So, Holiday Stroll, we had it on Saturday. I think it was a nice success. It was well-attended. Want to thank the DPW, the police, Bloomingdale Rec, Economic Development Commission, and the library for helping to put it together, to organize it, and really execute on a very successful event. Also, the fire department, they were instrumental in bringing Santa down, also allowing us to make hot chocolate over in their facilities, and many other things as well. So, thank you, everybody that was involved, and anyone that I might be forgetting as well. The second part for economic development, so they have a window decorating contest. They're tabulating the results of who won. This is for storefronts in town to decorate for the holidays. And then you really get bragging rights as the winner, and it's more of a promotional item, right, for the store, to thank them for participating, but then also showcase their storefront. So we should have the results of that pretty soon, within the week.
Okay. Rich, Dominic?
I know committees, but I'll just reiterate what Dawn said. At a personal level, as a parent of Bloomingdale daycare, I got to watch the fire department work firsthand with them as the river rose around Sloane Park, get the kids up into the gym, talk about a plan for early dismissal. It really impressed, and so the DPW out there behind, helping ensure that that stayed dry, and they were back open and operational the next day. I'm just very impressed by the whole operation all day as I drove around. Thank you to the fire department, police department, DPW.
Mike?
Good. We're gonna touch on the road a little bit.
Yeah. Okay. Just for me, just one thing, just want to recognize Leanne Scutaro. Scutaro, she was recognized for the Hometown Hero Award that the Congressman Gotheimer puts out, and she was recommended. She represents the PTA, and she's also on economic development. So she went down and received an award from Congressman Gotheimer to be recognized from her town. I don't know who sponsored her, but it's really nice to see people from Bloomingdale being recognized for what they're doing. It was very similar to what we, when we recognized Linda Bennett last spring. I think it was, right? Well, she's very involved in the town, in our community. She's dedicated, so we congratulate her. And I sent her just a little email, because I cannot be down there. I was out of town. But it's nice to see people from Bloomingdale being recognized for what they do for their communities, which is really nice. I'll touch a little bit on the episode on Sunday. Fortunately, I was down in Florida and to go see the great Miami Jet game. But we got hit with that storm down there, and then it was coming up the coast. And when it hit up in this area, we saw what was, what happened. I was in constant, actually, Mike and I were in constant contact with the chief of police, fire superintendent, which is the same person for the DPW OEM, to see what was going on and how things were. I will say, you know, I know Sloane Park's got, Sloane Park has some debris going through it. There was one tree in the back right that the roots are a little bit undermined. And I walked through that park today. That park held up. And also, when Dominic was talking about the Methodist Church with those kids down there that were in there, I got a phone call from the billing department and OEM regarding either having the parents pick up the kids early, but water did not get into that building as it normally would have if Sloane Park, I believe, if Sloane Park flood project was not done. It also came up in the car wash somewhat and went down Main Street, but in past history, when we had bad flooding, it would have covered Main Street all the way down to Union Ave. That did not happen at all. We got five and a half inches of rain in about, I'll say, eight to ten hours, because it really hit here pretty hard Sunday night into Monday. And I know there's people down in the lower end of town. We did do some dredging down there, but that was never going to take care of storms like this. That was to hopefully help the smaller storms, so people would not have it as bad in their backyards. We are working with the county to look at those culverts to be either cleaned or we'll see about being replaced. We noticed some pipes that are down there that I believe should be bigger along that covert. So I'm, actually, between myself and Mike, we are working with the county to see what can be done with them. So that's happening. I went down to Brant Lane today and watched the river come down. And my theory is down there, and it's just proven that when that river comes up and is above Brant Lane, which we evacuated people out of, that river backs up and comes up Van Damme. There's nothing we can do about that, because where it empties out is lower than when the river in height. And it's because the flats are named the flats because there is no pitch going from one end of Van Damme down to the river and back through those houses behind Van Damme. All in all, as Dawn said, I was down by Pompton Lakes. They got hit very, very hard down by Dawes Highway. Paquonic got hit down there. We were fortunate to not be as bad as everybody else. And again, I know Van Damme was closed this morning, and then I don't know what time it opened up. I'm assuming somewhere around ten o'clock or so. That water did recede to be able to open up that road. But it's gonna take some time for those backyards to lose the water, because the river is still up quite a bit. But it is slowly going down, because I noticed in the car wash, that water is gone now. It's no longer going down Main Street. So it is starting to go down. So, everybody that came out and worked, I thank them for their efforts and being out there. The DPW was out there for hours, police. We evacuated the animal shelter to get all the animals out. We evacuated people on Brant Lane, and we tried to help out as many people as possible. I got a phone call while I was away from somebody on Chestnut Street that had a foot and a half of water, and a refrigerator fell over in their basement, and they did not want to go down and unplug it. Don't blame them. So our DPW superintendent went down, and they got their basement pumped out so they can take care of what they needed to put their refrigerator back up. So, I know it's bad, but it's not as bad as it could have been. It's not as bad as it's been in the past. Two thousand eleven, I think, was sandy, so that was mostly wind, not water, but the one before that was
Irene.
Irene was probably not as bad as this in inches-wise, much rain in a little bit of time. So, more to come on the work that's being done in Van Damme. But as everybody knows, things take time to get done when you're dealing with local government. So, we're working on it as much as we can. That's pretty much all I have, so we will move on. Okay, item number nine, Resolution two thousand twenty-three, twelve dot one, to approve the consent agenda. Do we have a motion, please?
Second.
Okay, any questions regarding this? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Item ten, pending items. Second final reading of public hearing, ordinance number thirty-nine dash two thousand twenty-three, amended chapter twenty-four, environmental regulations, privately-owned salt storage. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Do I have a motion to read by title?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter twenty-four, environmental regulations of the Borough Code to adopt NJDEP mandated regulations for privately-owned salt storage.
Okay. Have a motion to open up public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anyone wishing to speak, please come up. Seeing no one, a motion to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do I have a motion for adoption?
Second.
Any questions before we move on? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. Item B, second final reading of public hearing, ordinance number forty dash two thousand twenty-three, amend the chapter ninety-two zoning miscellaneous uses. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Do I have a motion to read by title?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending chapter ninety-two zoning, Article Five, Regulations Governing Certain Uses, Section ninety-two dash twenty-six, Miscellaneous Uses of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Okay. Okay, a motion to open up public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? Seeing no one, a motion to close?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adoption?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Okay. Item C, second and final reading of public hearing, ordinance forty-one dash two thousand twenty-three, authorizing and confirming the special assessments of Andrew's Place sidewalks. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News. Copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Do I have a motion to read by title? All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, authorizing and confirming the special assessments calculated pursuant to statute and set forth in the report of Don Mofolsky Engineering Associates in connection with the Andrew Place sidewalk improvements to be paid in installments over the course of ten years.
Do I have a motion about public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak? You good? Okay. Okay, seeing no one, a motion to close?
So moved.
Aye.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adoption? Any questions? Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Okay. Item D, second final reading of public hearing, ordinance number forty-two dash two thousand twenty-three, amend the chapter seventeen, water and chapter eighteen sewer rates and charges for services. Public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in the municipal building, published in the Herald News, and copies were made available to the public, so that a motion may be made that it be read by title.
Do I have a motion to read by title? All in favor?
Aye.
An ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale to amend and supplement chapter seventeen, entitled Water, and chapter eighteen, entitled Sewer, of the revised general ordinances of the Borough of Bloomingdale, including a schedule of rates and charges for services rendered to the users of the water supply system and sanitary sewer system.
Okay. Do I have a motion to open up public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, please come up.
Lieutenant Huntley, six Van Damme, what are the changes?
Donoway, will you?
Yeah, Donoway.
I guess it varies on how much you can pay.
Well, it's a certain amount per gallons or whatever that they use. And it's Do you want the red line?
No, no, that's what she's asking.
Oh, okay.
The CFO did a expression analysis. I can get you that number. I don't have it off the top of my head. She, I can get you the expression that she put together.
Is that right?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Wait, what was the percentage increase?
It was ten percent.
Ten percent.
Ten percent.
Which was the recommended from our CFO?
CFO, if we don't, we'll be in the red. CFO that we're, if we don't, we'll be in the red in 2025 for sure.
That's in '25. And we haven't raised rates in... Yeah, no. Five years. We've been holding it steady for a while. Anyone else wishing to come up? Seeing no one, have a motion to close? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion for adoption.
So move.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Item 11. Adoption of resolutions number 2022 12 dot 15, payment of the bills. Do I have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second, but shouldn't that be 23?
Oh, sorry.
Did we change that?
It's just a typo.
Oh, 23, yeah, sorry. Thanks, Rich. I just read. 2023 12 dot 15, payment of the bills. And we have a...
Yasi and...
Yasi and Delaripa. Any questions? Roll call.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Okay. Item B. Adoption resolution number 2023 12 dot 16, transfer of appropriations. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Okay. Item C. Adoption resolution number 2023 12 dot 17, hiring a patrolman for the Bloomingdale Police Department, Zach Burrell. Do I have a motion, please?
Second.
I just want to say that when the police department went through their interview process and the testing and everything that we went through, Zach was the highest candidate. And this is who, our chief, when he went through, this is who his interviewing committee chose. So do I have a roll call, please?
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Okay. Item D. Adoption of resolution number 2023 12 dot 18, person-to-person transfer of ABC license at 139 Hamburg Turnpike, which is the... Turnpike Liquors up the street. This is just, I think his niece is taking over the business of the transfer and the name over to her. Do I have a motion, please?
Sum up.
Roll call.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Okay. Item E. Adoption of resolution number 2023 12 dot 19, authorizing a sale and bond anticipation notes. Do I have a motion, please? So move. Any questions? Roll call.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Item F. Adoption of resolution number 2023 12 dot 20, purchase of portable storage containers for the recreation department. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Okay. Adoption, item G. Adoption resolution number 2023 2023 12 dot 21, repurpose of CDBG grant funds for the rehabilitation of the senior center flooring. Do I have a motion? Okay. Before we vote on this, I just want everybody to know that the seniors' floor has a crack at the front entrance and we believe, I had somebody look at it, is that that floor is heaving at that entrance, which is causing the wall on the... Over top of the, when you first walk in the door and you get into the main room, that whole wall is starting to lift. And you can stand on one side and roll a marble on it and it'll roll right to the other wall. It's off by probably a good four inches from one side of the room to the other. We want to prevent trips and falls for our seniors. We don't want to take a chance of somebody getting hurt over there. So we are reallocating the money that was earmarked for Main Street sidewalks. And we spoke to the grant facilitator that are we able to transfer the money over there? And she said yes, so we can get that done. So that's a $90,000...
We're getting that and the ADA one.
And, yeah.
The Monty Bergen Clark Street area.
Right.
Combine them to get us $150 for that floor.
Right. And then we're gonna apply this year's...
Whatever extra we need.
We need to get that floor taken care of, all right? So we did receive a grant of the AD ramps that we would have chose after the Muggers goal, but we think this is a better spend for the senior center so nobody gets hurt. Okay? If anybody wants to go over and take a look at it, we'd be more than willing to meet you there. I can show you. We got doors that are off kilter by an inch and a half in the storeroom, which we're taking the doors off if they don't close. So there's a serious issue over there. So that's what that's about. So if you have any questions, roll call.
Yasi?
Yes.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Okay. Item 11. Renewal shared service agreements. We're gonna move all these at one time. Adoption of resolution number 2023 12 dot 22 through resolution 2023 12 dot 30. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions? Roll call.
Catalano?
Yes.
Delaripa?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Schubert?
Yes.
Yasi?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to open up public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak, come on up.
Linda Huntley, 86, Van Dam. For the new patrolman, did he, he's already gone through the training?
No.
Oh, so we're paying for it?
We are paying for his training.
When, how come that change was made?
Because...
We never did that before.
Well, we have. We did it a couple of years ago. I forgot who, which one we hired. We had a hundred and some candidates. We hired two patrolmen through there. The process was when, I guess they, because we're involved in the academy, we wanted to get the best candidate and they didn't feel the candidates down there for the alternate route program. Most of, most of them were taken and they felt the better way to do this is do it on our own and through the interview process coming in-house. As you know, when somebody's going through the academy, their salary is not the same as if somebody was trained. So it's a cut in pay until that person is trained, goes through the whole academy, which is a six-month period. So the best fit was opening it up to the public and we had 30, approximately...
Just, just not the 30.
Of 30 candidates that came in and then through the interview process, it got to 16, it got to whatever, they went through the, people drop out, they don't come back and then we are where we are today.
As far as the bond anticipation notes, what interest rate are we paying on those?
The anticipation about three and three quarters.
And as far as the flood mitigation, I just think that someone should send a letter to the people in Van Dam that got flooded. There's a lot of people who are extremely upset because of the culvert. I've had so many people saying to me that what's going on, how come the borough hasn't completed this? I understand that no matter what you would have done, it was gonna flood. And I tell this DPW guys, and they were trying to clean out the drains in front of my house, that it's, the water's got nowhere to go. I don't care how many leaves you got there, it's not going anywhere.
Right.
But they ignored me, but anyway, beside the point.
But there was also somebody blowing the leaves into the, into the...
That was today I heard this.
Yeah. I don't know who it was, I just, I saw the same thing you did.
But I think people should be informed that culverts will be fixed and that this really had nothing to do with Van Dam itself being flooded. It's just because it gets backed up because of the Quanah. And people, new people do not understand that. And I think it would just behoove you to do that. It'll save a lot of complaints.
I could go down and knock on doors. I know I spoke to Marissa French and her husband. I called him from Florida and, you know, because that's when he called me. And I've been working with them because of the Chestnut Street problem we're having over there. There's, and I can just explain that real quick. There's where we finished the dredging, we'll just call it, right? That's where we finished. And then from that point on, we're gonna budget money to continue the process. But that culvert, when you look at it and the water, there's something under there that is either clogging it or collapsed. We had advance come over and look at it. They don't have the machines, from what we're being told, because when they put their snake under there, whatever they do to blow it out with, it's floating versus sinking down and pushing it out of the way. So that tells me there's something either stuck in there. And on the left side, if you're from Van Dam, you're facing Chestnut, I'll call it an A inlet, which is a sewer, all right? But it's got a solid cap on it. We remove that, that has collapsed inside of there. So it's almost like putting your finger over a hose, you get that...
Right.
All right? But that water is not moving from that part, that part on down to Van Dam and from those people's property. On the opposite side, it's not moving quick enough, so that tells me there's a problem there. That's where I'm working with the county to see who owns them, even though their numbers are on the, on the rail. And we're trying to find out who's responsible for that.
The authorities, I mean, I met that years ago. We went through the, we weren't engineers and I hadn't done here.
It goes back to, from what I looked up, it goes back to 1970, 1980, whatever was discussed back then. So I'm trying to find that paperwork and then see if it's our responsibility, we have to fix it. If it's not, the county has to. So that's where we are today. And I'd explain, explain that to the people that live in that general area, you know, because I think when that opens up, on normal rain, it'll just go through. Because everything else seems to be open.
From Poplar on, or that guy near the yards or just...
I know. I was down there today, I was out there this morning, I was there this afternoon on the way home from work and I looked at it, it's not draining the way it should be as far as I'm concerned.
And I was surprised that in front of my house was still as wet as it was for as long as it was.
Yeah.
That normally doesn't happen.
And the dorm it goes. But if you go down by Brant Lane, and I filmed this, you want to see, I can show it to you, it looks like when the water's coming down the river, the water's actually coming back under Brant Lane because it...
Oh, it does, because everything meets together and it just stops.
It just stops there, yeah. So we're doing the best we can to make it better, I won't say corrected.
I think no matter what, the water table is also very high, after having lived down there myself. And there's areas that no matter anything that we do with those culverts, some of those houses are just simply going to flood.
And the amount of rain we had, yes, but not under normal circumstances.
Not normal circumstances.
Not under normal circumstances, but this is not gonna be the end of our massive rains from the future. But what I would not want to see happen is people be under the impression that if we fix the culverts, it's going to fix their problems.
Right.
And so...
Most people down there, I believe, understand that, but they've been there a long time.
Yes.
It's the people that went and bought there that don't really understand. Because I saw things, you know, they dredged it and it didn't make, it made it worse. But it made it worse because I think what I'm finding, because we're investigating it now, and myself, Mike and Frank, we go down there, we tear things apart, but we can only go so far. You know, we don't have the equipment to do it, so I'm trying.
This rain is just a lot, so we've got...
Normal rain, it should go through, as long as the river's not up. You're all. Anyone else? Seeing no one, motion to close?
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We do not have an executive session tonight. I just like to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, be safe. It is supposed to start getting colder again, so...
It already has.
Dress appropriately.
John, can I add one thing that we, that we missed? I did wanna, if you wanna just, or me, thank the fire department for the Santa run again and our police department?
Going through town?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's actually a big thing in town, as Don was talking, when the fire department, and I guess the police department is involved too, because they decorate their truck.
Yes.
And they go in street to street to street. They did it all in one night this year and they kind of, they're getting really good at it, because now there's a map, you can track, you can track Santa coming around town. So people aren't calling the police department, when's he coming, can he come back? But you're just gonna follow the sirens, it's kinda easy to find them. But they did a great job and Santa, the person that helped Santa be Santa for the little kids, spent the whole, whole day and night in the Santa outfit and did a, did a really nice job. And, and there was, there was a birthday party for somebody that doesn't even live in town, had a little next door and they stopped there for that child, just so that child could see Santa on his birthday, so, which was pretty nice. So, yeah, they did a great job, our PD, and they, they enjoy it. Still the young guys, to be honest, we did a couple of...
I was gonna say, he ain't young enough.
So we thank them for that. So without saying that, everybody, please enjoy your holiday, be safe, and can have a motion to adjourn.
Sum up.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.